Okay, it looks like we are recording the meeting, Gary.
Well, thank you, Jolene. 6:01, and I called this meeting of the monthly meeting of the Ripon Area School District Board of Education to order. And we convened this meeting and called it to order in accordance with open meeting laws. The meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the exact Open Meeting Law Statute 19.84 and related legal references. Our district vision is we are one of Wisconsin's finest school districts, fostering excellence for all through innovation. And we accomplish this vision through our core values of integrity, innovation, excellence, commitment, collaboration, and kindness. Jolene, have we received any written comments?
Mary, do we want to share those, the two emails from the staff?
Or? I did, I did forward them to the board. But we could certainly. I like those. Hold on one second, let me pull that up. Okay.
Think I have them and I could read them.
Sure, there were two that Mary sent to you.
Yeah.
Forwarded on.
Yes. Um, let's see. Yes. Okay, the first communication is from Nancy Beauchamp. And Nancy writes in appreciation and gratitude that the district allowed her to continue working. She notes that many school districts stopped their after-school staff and stopped their support staff. And she appreciates still being able to be employed during this health crisis. Second one is a note from Debbie Mathias thanking, again thanking the district and board that we allowed people who other districts, positions who other districts cut off from work, we allow them to continue to be paid. And she notes that doing this really helps for a sense of stability in a very turbulent environment. So thank you very much. Okay, next, we do have time for visitors' comments. If they would like to take three minutes to address the board on any agenda item that we have. Travis and Jolene, are we, are we able to tell whether there are public members of the public of this meeting?
I'm not seeing anybody so far, maybe.
I think, I think I noted that. But, but. I'm not, I'm not.
Okay. I'm comfortable moving on. I'd like a motion to adopt or adjust today's agenda.
I'll move to approve, Nate.
Thank you, Nate. Second?
I'll second.
Is that Andy?
Yep.
Thank you. We'll call for the vote. The agenda is almost adopted. We need Andy.
I'm trying to figure out how to do it.
Are you logged, you're logged in, right, to the meeting?
Yeah.
So at the top.
Oh, there is. Okay, I got it.
Okay, very good. No problems. Okay, meeting is adopted. The agenda is adopted. Okay, now, it's time for a special presentations. Do we have a representative from the city to discuss the trail easement, proposed trail easement agreement?
Gary, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you.
Mayor Will.
Mayor.
We should have Dave Rasmussen from MSA on the line. I don't know if Dave's there. Dave? It doesn't sound like Dave's there, maybe. Does, you gotta push star six?
I'm on here.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Dave Rasmussen. I'm Community Development Specialist with MSA Professional Services. And I'm working with the city of Ripon regarding a development in Murray Park, which would entail a trailhead facility along with a senior center. And what we would like to do is connect with the Mascutin Trail to have this trailhead facility connect with the Mascutin Trail. And we are looking at getting an easement from the school district, 30-foot easement, permanent easement on the south end of their property that would get us to the Murray Park. We have to figure out how to get it, jump across there. Couple other landowners involved, but that is our request. I don't know if, if we shared any of the plans with any of the folks and so forth on our combined facility there, trailhead facility and senior center, senior center in Murray Park. But applications for the stewardship go in May first. And so we're looking at, you know, proposing that get you, get the school board feeling on, on possible easement on the south end of that property.
Just to tie on with what, what Dave was talking about here, so this would be the south side of the school property, which is on the north side of Murray Park, that farmland out there and the other side of the fence line there. And this is a stewardship grant we're applying for, for $500,000. The potential here, if we get the stewardship with the other gift and clothes money that we're looking to put this together would be a total of a $2 million project just west of Murray Park School up there. And as you mentioned, the senior center would be involved there, so it'd be a potential opportunity for the seniors in the school district to collaborate and work together and/or for the students to be able to, you know, access the trail. There is no trailhead facility, if you will, anywhere's around here. And just west of Ripon, they're actually putting in the trail now that's going to connect Green Lake to Ripon. And if we can get the stewardship and this, and our other funding comes into place here with the street project that we're doing, that's a $2.2 million project, so the the total between both projects will be about $4.2 million. And this trailhead facility, in a sense, would be right between Green Lake and Berlin, if you will, so if we, you can envision the Assembly, Baptist Assembly out there on Green Lake, west of the city. You can go from there basically all the way to Ripon when this is all done. And if we can get this little connector from Murray Park to the Mascutin, then you could continue through all the way up to Mascutin and basically just across the Fox River in Berlin to the DNR land. So it would be, and we'd be right smack dab in the middle with our senior center slash trailhead facility right in Murray Park across from Murray Park School. The stewardship grant is something that, it's one piece of the puzzle. The road project that we are applying for now also. The program in the building might still happen even if we don't get the stewardship. It's just gonna have to be scaled back. So we, the easement will allow us to score better. Dave will tell you about the scoring. I think, I'm sure you guys are aware of that at the school district too, that everything you can do and cross your Ts and dot your Is before you submit helps you score better on grants. And I don't know, Dave can explain exactly what we're looking for from the school district. If it's just a letter of support, that if we get this and we move forward, that you would grant us an easement or not, that might be enough just to satisfy what Dave's looking for to submit this grant. Anything else, Lori?
No, that's it.
Dave, you wanna just touch on anything there that I maybe just talked about and add?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, again, the intent is to apply for a stewardship grant. Those grant applications do it, are due in May. We are looking at, you know, paying for a portion of the trailhead facility, senior center complex, which would include outdoor bathrooms so that we have a year-round facility. The stewardship grant program is, is for outdoor recreation activities. And to tie in the trailhead facility, we need to connect trails and so forth. We do have trails within the park itself, but we're looking at connecting with the Mascutin Trail, which is, you know, just to the, to the east of your, of your property, comes out right at that intersection there. Again, as the mayor said, this would tie in, you know, quite a few other trails in the area. It'd be a trailhead facility. The, we have support, we have letters of support from quite a few of the business organizations within the city of Ripon, town of Ripon, Ripon College. Fond du Lac County supports this. It's part of their outdoor recreation plan to have a trailhead, trailhead facility and in Ripon or in the area. And, and have these trails connect. As Mayor said, it would open up trails to other areas and that. So we're looking at a easement from the school to use that property for a trail, you know, trail facilities. It would be a trail that would be constructed connecting the Mascutin to Murray Park, where then we have the internal trail system there that would eventually lead up to the trailhead facility, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just to add to that, we do have an easement west of Murray Park right now to connect to the Northwestern Trail. So when that's all done and we do this project, that is already green-lighted and everything's in place for the west end. This would just be for the east end for the Mascutin, so the northwest, that part's all done. And as Dave did just mention, this would be a year-round facility, a trailhead facility. So summertime walking, biking, running, wintertime, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, whatever have you. It'll be a year-round facility that's a combination, senior center on one side, trailhead facility on the other side. However, it's designed, we don't have it really designed yet or placed really in the park yet, but it'll have access year-round and outdoor seating and parking and everything you need for the trailhead facility.
So folks from the city, what is the nature of, what would be, what would be constructed within the 30-foot width of the, the easement? Where that blue, that blue segment is where that's later on and that you provided with us? Is it a 30-foot paved trail? Is it crushed rock? Could you, could you just describe that?
Yeah. At this time, we haven't determined, you know, what, you know, the trail base was gonna be. It could be a similar to the Mascutin, which I believe is crushed limestone. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
So it may be just crushed limestone. The trail itself would be probably 10 or 12 feet wide, enough for, you know, bicyclists and so forth to meet. So, you know, 30 feet is kind of, you know, we could get by with 20 feet, I guess. You know, with a, with a 10 to 12-foot wide trail. The stewardship, again, the, you know, part of the stewardship application is the cost of putting that limestone trail together along that property and, and again, the trailhead facility too.
Okay, that makes sense. And then my, my only other question is if you don't need all 30 feet, would, would it be an issue for the tenant farmer to continue to plant up to? Or what, what would be, do you have any idea of how much? How many feet would be taken out of production?
Yeah, I, I think that's fine, Gary, to be honest with you. I mean, it's, it's like any other easement, you know, road easements and anything else. You have an easement that's X amount of feet and even out in the country on roads and so forth like that, farmers still work all the land and stuff. The, as Dave mentioned, the usable surface would probably be more than a range from 12 to 15 feet, something like that. And then you have a little bit next to that, so. You know, if there's an easement, there's a 30 feet, and at the end of the day, the farmer's working an extra five feet. I don't think that's gonna bother anybody. The easement's there, it'll be, you know, dedicated, recorded, and everybody will know where it is. And if he works an extra couple feet, I don't think anybody's gonna scrabble about that. And I mean, they do it all the time now out in the country and townships and stuff, so. And, and your other question, Gary, and what it's gonna be is, you know, my assumption would be it's gonna be limestone initially, depending on funding and, and resources and maybe there's donations, but once this is in there and you have a, a real dedicated trail from Green Lake through Ripon up to Berlin in a nice trailhead facility, and I don't know, west of town, I assume that's gonna be all blacktop there. My assumption would be sometime down the road, that'll probably wind up turning into blacktop, at least probably from the trailhead facility out of ways, both ways sometime in the future. We have, MSA has been a great resource for us. I don't know if you guys use them for anything or not, but you know, they'll help with getting funding and other grants and stuff down the road. So if there's something else we do down the road, can maybe be tied in with that. But limestone, I would assume initially, and, and maybe sometime down the road, blacktop.
Okay.
I'd like to, if I could address that question about the easement too. There currently is an easement there along that property line. I think it might be an electrical easement. According to our research of the, of the land records, so it, it, you know, we'd have to notify if the easement was granted, the owner of that easement would also have to be notified that, you know, that we would be having a trail there. So again, you, you know, maybe you didn't know that there was an easement there, but the farmer has been able to use that land. You know, with that easement there, so.
Got it. Does the board have any other questions for the city reps?
Hi, it's Betsy. Thanks for the presentation tonight. Just to be clear, we are only granting an easement for the trail. Is that correct? And what kind of, what kind of language do we have in the document that puts parameters on that, so that you can only put the trail on the trail only in there versus something else on this land?
Yeah, it would be an easement for trail purposes. And you, we can, you know, put the document together that it specifically states for, you know, recreational trail purposes only.
Yeah, there wouldn't be no buildings or anything like that, Betsy, on there. It would just be a connector trail, but good question. And if there's something we need to, you know, call out specifically in there that you're looking for, just, you know, let us know and you can email Lori and we can make sure that whatever the board thinks, if there's something you really specifically want in there. Is there anything, Lori, right now that you can think of?
No.
You know, it's just to get to the, it's to connect the Mascutin to the northeast corner of Murray Park. And it's just a trail like, you know, any other trail. You know, going up Mascutin, all that's up there is, you know, there's a Eagle Scout, I think Aiden Schoff did that years ago. You know, just north of, I think it's Cork Street there. But otherwise, there's just some benches and stuff there. And I, I wouldn't anticipate anybody even wanting to bench from Murray Park, which is a trailhead, just 500 yards, 1,000 yards from there to the main Mascutin Trail by the industrial park they're heading north. So it would just be, and basically it's, there is, and the other thing, maybe some of you don't know either, is there is access to the Mascutin Trail currently, right next on the north side of Rick Dom's house, right on Eureka Street. So that's where we're looking, is just basically from Eureka Street to northeast corner of Murray Park, because there is a connector right now from the east side of Eureka over to the Mascutin. So this would be from the west side of Eureka, just to the northeast corner of Murray Park.
Betsy, in looking at the proposed contract that city council proposed, it does look like the, the easement is specific for the city to, for, to build a trail. But there, and actually, there is a point number three in the contract that actually prohibits us from doing construction within that right-of-way, within the easement. So that's kind of interesting.
And, and there again, I mean, if there's something down the road where the school district, you know, needs that land or is expanding onto Murray Park or whatever have you, you know, I'm not gonna be here, obviously, but the city and, and, you know, same thing with the school board, you would work with the city and collaboratively and reroute the trail a different direction, so we'd still have a connector, one way, shape, or form, or another. And as Dave mentioned, I don't know about this easement for the, for the Power and Light. If that's something that is an issue, that that can't be moved ever, Gary, and you can't ever build anything there, then ours is kind of awash with that, but that's something I'd wanna check into and know. But, you know, if there is and you guys move something and Power and Light moves something, the city would be willing to, you know, reroute the trail. I mean, it'd be, you know, 15, 20 years down the road, all of a sudden, there's no connector anymore that really wouldn't make sense and doesn't benefit anybody.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. It does say in your Exhibit A that there is an electrical easement of unknown width. Yeah, that makes sense. That makes total sense, Gary. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for that presentation. That's very helpful.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. We really appreciate it and work with Lori via email, whatever you guys need to do to work out. If you need something, just holler.
Okay, thank you.
Stay safe.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm good. Good night. Okay, the next agenda item is a statement from the Ripon High School Student Representative. I don't know if he is here in this meeting.
Oh, yeah, no worries, I'm here.
Hi, Theo.
Hi, Theo.
Hey, Theo.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, of course. I'm happy to be here.
Can you tell us how things are going in the virtual world of Ripon High School?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I really can't say enough good things about the students, the administration, and the teachers. I think the, the transition to online learning has been about as smooth as we could have hoped for. I know in all of my classes, things are just going really well, even despite all the constraints of online learning. I mean, even in a class like band, which, as you can imagine, has a lot of unique challenges with online learning. I think everything's just going really well. And I think I, I've been able to do a couple of different programs so far because of online learning. Like the Friday porch concerts, which are a lot of fun through band. And then also Mr. Hatlen's online reading program for the elementary schools has been a lot of fun. I just had another session today and I'll say that even though it's really for them, I always, I'm always able to enjoy it quite a bit, so. I don't know, do you guys have any questions for me about the student experience with online learning?
Theo, I'm wondering, are, can you elaborate on some things that just aren't possible?
I think one of the biggest issues we've run into in band is just how do you conduct a bunch of kids over, like, I think in my band class, there's 70 students, and how do you conduct all those people over FaceTime when you take into account video lag and everything else? So I'll be honest, it is a little difficult because that when the sound comes through, it is almost just a cacophony, but Mrs. Pauline has been able to use note cards to start and stop the band, so we're able to move with, relatively together, so that's good. But it's, it's always a learning process and I think we're getting better with time. And I think as far as things that aren't possible, I know club meetings haven't, or clubs haven't been able to meet at all since online learning began, which is difficult. But I think, I just think we've done a really good job of accommodating everything. So there really isn't too much that's impossible online, apart from obviously things that have to be done face-to-face.
Theo? Just a real quick question with a little bit of the communication that you've been able to have with the seniors. Is there anything as a district or as a board that we can do to help finish out the school year strong? Or do anything special for the seniors that you've seen other districts or heard students say that they wish that we were able to do for them?
You know, I haven't heard anything. I think just a lot of students are adamant about having prom and graduation and all those, you know, iconic senior year things, just because obviously, like, who wants to go to school for 13 years and then get a diploma in the mail? But I think so far, the school district has done a great job of helping out the seniors, especially with the new program. I, I forget what it's called. Mr. Kinzinger can remind me, but I think it's under the lights where they pay tribute to all the senior athletes. And I think just all those programs are really neat. And I think in addition to that, outside of the school district, a couple of students made an Instagram page for the class of 2020 where everyone can make a post about where they're going and just what their plans are for the coming years. And I think that's just another really cool way that everyone's trying to stay connected. So, I'll certainly keep you updated if I hear anything, but so far, I think you guys have all done a really good job, so.
Thank you, Theo. That was an excellent report. And I appreciate your willingness to come and tell us about the remote learning experience at Ripon High School.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Theo.
Thanks, Theo. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of this evening's consent agenda. I would appreciate a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Gary, this is John. I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John.
Andy, I'll second.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, we'll call for the vote. Oh, I guess I should have asked if there was discussion. I'm sorry. If, does anybody have any, okay. I'm not hearing any, so. Sorry about that.
No discussion allowed, anyway.
If you do, if you don't want to approve the consent agenda, don't, don't vote for it. And we can discuss. All right, Tom, I'm just waiting for your vote.
I don't have anything that comes up for a vote.
Okay. Can you try to rejoin?
Join the meeting.
Yeah.
Nah, sorry, Gary.
No, no worries. Join, call, try to rejoin the meeting. Great.
There we go.
There we go.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Okay, I think we are done with that. That passes unanimously. And thank you very much. Okay, under, we're now in the new business, uh, section. And first, um, item is considering approval for, um, the proposed, uh, refresh of the high school fitness lab. Let's put the motion in play and then we'll, um, call for any discussion.
Gary, this is John. I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John.
This is Amy. I'll second.
And thank you, Amy. Okay, we had a nice presentation last month about the fitness lab. Are there any other, um, questions or items of discussion, um, about the proposal?
This is Nate. I just have a quick question. Uh, in regards to, uh, the type of equipment that we are looking to replace, uh, is the wear and tear pretty universal across the board regardless of who, who we would be going through?
Do you mean of the current equipment or the proposed vendor's equipment?
Um, with, with the proposed vendors, I, I guess across the board, um, with all the vendors that we have looked at, excuse me. Um, what is the wear and tear or the life expectancy, so to speak, of the equipment? Is that, um, across the board? Is that, i- is it the same?
Hi, hi Nate. This is Jonah. I can't say too much about it because I, I don't know. But a couple of things that I can tell you is that, um, we did have state pricing on a lot of the equipment. So when we got bids from three vendors, they were actually giving us bids on the exact same, um, like the same squat racks or the same, uh, dumbbell sets.
Okay.
So it was just like, it was just the price that was different. The actual equipment was identical.
Okay.
And the other thing that I thought was pretty good was that this was a vendor who had, um, install, I think he had installed, um, Ripon College and Fond du Lac High School. Um, they had used, you know, that same equipment. Um, I don't know if it's the exact same brand, but it's the same, it's the same vendor who's, you know, selling them, so.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious if, um, if different equipment, uh, for whatever reason, could perhaps have better wear and tear, so to speak. Good to know. Thank you.
Nate, this is, this is Brian. Um, Summit, Summit is one of the preferred vendors for school districts and with the state pricing. Um, and, uh, another school district that has used the equipment is, um, Plymouth, uh, when they did their upgrade of their facilities. Um, so we really reached out to multiple school districts in our, in our, um, should I say in our group, um, nearby, to actually look at the equipment and see how it's held up. Uh, Fond du Lac's had theirs for almost nine years now, um, and it's held up pretty well.
Okay. Thank you for that, Brian.
So Gary, I just had a quick question. Um, are we then going with the Summit proposal and not the Matrix proposal?
Uh, sorry, sorry for confusion Nicole. Um, all the, all the equipment is called Matrix, um, so it is Summit, that would be the preferred vendor.
Okay, because the Matrix quote, I realize that Summit has Matrix equipment, but the Matrix quote is two thousand dollars more, give or take. But we're not going with that particular quote. We're getting Matrix equipment with a Summit proposal.
Correct, because, correct, they gave us a better pricing than, uh, they either have to match or beat state pricing.
Okay. So do we need that in the motion? I guess is my second question. What proposal we're moving to approve?
Um, it's, it's within the recommendation in the memo Nicole.
Okay.
So I think we're okay because it says as presented.
Um, yes, Summit, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions about, uh, the motion?
Hi, it's Betsy. Um, I brought this up, uh, in our last meeting when we first saw the proposal. I, I will bring it up again. We need to be mindful, um, going forward. The, the type of equipment that's described in this proposal, you know, different athletes use different types of equipment. Boys' sports tend to use, um, the, the barbells and the benches and the squats more often than the girls' sports do. And we just need to make sure that as we're refreshing our equipment, we're refreshing for all of our athletes in all different sports. They all have different needs. I don't know if we've got somebody on the line that can speak to that. Um, but we need to keep that in mind and, and not leave anybody out as we go forward. I'm certainly not opposed to refreshing these pieces of equipment, but we need to look at this broadly as well.
Betsy, this is Brian. So I did reach out to Bill Kinzinger after the, the last meeting, um, just with that question. And he, he had shared with me that, um, with, with them and, or with him and the two gym teachers and just their committee that they looked at that, the fitness lab, those were the items that were the most safety issues and at end of life, um, to re- replace that. The other equipment, the cardio equipment and items like that, um, are a little bit newer. Um, so they would be later in the, in a, in a refresh, um, you know, if we, down the road, when we look at that kind of equipment.
Thanks, Brian. I appreciate that. As, as long as we're keeping everyone in mind as we do this type of work.
I think the other thing I'm just going to add is that, you know, elite athletes like your daughter at Ripon College, um, they typically, male or female, are using dumbbells and, uh, and barbells and squat racks. I, you know, regardless of gender, but, um, I'm not sure. I, I've certainly, you know, at Ripon College, you can see athletes, you know, using dumbbells and barbells and, I don't know. I'm not sure. I think things are changing somewhat, but.
Jonah, you just made my daughter's day by describing her as an elite athlete. Wow. Actually, I, you know, I, my totally unscientific focus group of two, I've got a runner and I've got, um, a soccer player. And I did ask for their opinion on this. And they did describe that, you know, the different types of athletes use different types of equipment. And we need to make sure that everybody's got access to good equipment. So as I said, I'm certainly not opposed to refreshing this, but let's keep everybody in mind. And it sounds like you have reached out to the, to the staff to make sure that we're doing that. So thank you.
Okay, well stated. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, I'll call for the vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up is consideration of approving the boiler replacements at Murray Park Quest Elementary School. Would somebody care to, uh, make a motion?
Tom makes the motion.
Thank you, Tom.
And I'll second it. Nate.
Thank you. Thank you, Nate. Uh, I don't know if Jonah or Brian wants to, um, summarize the situation and the proposal.
Gary, I can start. This is Brian. Um, this was something that we were looking at, um, quite seriously after we had the issue at Barlow. Um, being that these are seven years older than the Barlow ones that, uh, had failed, uh, in December of last year. Um, really looking at, um, replacing them to one, um, get the benefits of the, um, uh, savings in, in fuel costs and, uh, the focus on energy, um, rebates. And then also really looking at the focus on energy presentation that we had from Joe Kotwitz on some things to really look at because our buildings, um, fared very low in the, in the energy audit when they did school districts.
And the, uh, the only thing I was going to add was just about the financial side of things. Um, as the memo talked about, um, when we have so much savings this year because of the school closures, we have to either spend it or put it into, uh, Fund Forty-Six to keep taxes low, uh, for next school year. And, you know, as we were kind of looking ahead, the, the failure of the boilers, uh, seemed like a, a major, a major project that, that we could tackle this year. And it just seemed like it would be good stewardship to do it this year, knowing that they're past, uh, their expected life expectancy. Um, and that we'd start to see some energy savings right away with it as well. So it just seemed like a very smart project to us, but.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, entertain any other questions for Jonah or Brian, um, on this motion before we, before we vote.
Jonah, this is Amy. I just want to think.
Amy, we lost you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, um, get a local quote. I, I appreciate it that we're trying to keep business local. So thank you.
Yes, uh, Brian got that quote. And that was, that was good that we had, had that as well.
Excellent. Well, um, okay. Um, if there are no other questions or comments, I, let's, uh, vote on this, uh, motion. Uh, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very excited about being able to do this. Okay, um, next, next up I think is sort of a companion to our, uh, what we just voted on. And this had to do with the HVAC controls also at Murray Park Quest. And, uh, before we hear some more about it, um, I'd like, uh, somebody to, uh, move, uh, to make a motion.
Tom makes the motion.
Thank you, Tom.
John will second.
Thank you, John. Are there questions, uh, for, uh, Brian or Jonah on this aspect of the, um, this kind of goes with the, well, I'll let them, I'll let them talk perhaps.
Gary, this is Brian. So this is, uh, a continuation of the project that we did last, uh, at the end of the school year. Uh, we did the air handlers and, uh, a couple, uh, areas, uh, when, when you approved it last, uh, May. Um, this, this last school year, we've had some, uh, additional equipment fail in classrooms where we had to replace them, uh, either when there was no school or early hours, uh, because of leaks or that, um, valve started to fail. And, um, the, these, uh, three stages that we, that we're proposing for recommendation would actually address the rest of the classrooms, any, any of the learning environments in Murray Park, uh, Quest area. Um, we would have just a little bit left in this project to finish it up, but, uh, we would be addressing anything critical, um, for controls, uh, in classroom areas.
I'm assuming that we get some energy savings?
I, absolutely. Um, we, we won't see as big of an energy savings as we saw with the, the first stage with the air handlers. Um, but we are seeing, uh, energy savings in the areas that, um, have been completed. Plus, we also see now constant comfortable temperatures instead of, uh, the swings of too hot, too cold, um, not working right, no airflow, that kind of things.
Very good. Are there any other questions for, um, for Brian? Or questions for Jonah? Okay, hearing none, let's, um, let's vote on this motion. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up is, uh, approving the 2019-2020 medical advisor agreement. I'll, uh, accept the motion.
This is John. I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John.
Nate will second.
Thank you, Nate. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments about the advisor agreement? Uh, we do this annually, um, with Dr. Like. Okay. Uh, if there are no, uh, comments or questions, I'll call for the vote. And, uh, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, next, um, next motion, uh, next on the agenda is approving the OPEB trust renewal. Would somebody care to make a motion on this, please?
This is Andy. I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Andy.
This is John. I'll second.
Thank you, John. Okay, are there any questions on the OPEB trust? Okay. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. If I can get back to where that is. Okay. Uh, that motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on. We're now at personnel, uh, actions and, um, this is, um, a motion to approve the full-time teacher and psychologist, um, renewals. Um, would somebody care to, uh, place that on the table with a motion? I'm sorry, not place it on the table, place it up for discussion.
Uh, it's Betsy. So moved.
Thank you, Betsy.
Amy, second.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, are there any questions about the contract renewals stated in the memo? Okay, so we're voting on the part-time letter as well, correct? Mary?
Yes, Gary.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no other questions, let's, let's vote. Okay, thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Next is a memo about some two staff transfers positions. Would somebody please move that?
So moved, Nate.
Thank you, Nate.
This is John, I'll second.
And thank you, John. Any questions or discussions about these transfers? Okay, hearing none, let us vote. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, the next, the next motion has to do with hiring professional staff. And there are two, three, six recommendations. Would somebody please make a motion?
Tom makes the motion.
Thank you, Tom. Looking for a second.
This is Andy, I'll second.
Thank you, Andy. Okay. Are there any questions with regard to these recommendations? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we've taken care of our business. Now it's time to to discuss possible upcoming actions. So the first item in possible upcoming actions is the trail easement agreement that was presented by the city at the start of the meeting. I'm just going to say that if we could help bring a nice trail that connects Ripon to Green Lake and Berlin, I'm I'm all for it personally. I don't know if there are any concerns with regard to the 30-foot easement on our district If so, now's a good time to talk about it.
Gary, this is Amy. I just, I want to make a comment that if it doesn't hinder the school district for the possible future expansion, I think the idea of helping promote the senior center and connecting the trails is a win-win for Ripon. So as long as everybody else is on board, I think it's a fantastic opportunity for our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, I would echo that as well. I think the opportunity to connect the trail is going to be great, and it makes sense. And also, the 30-foot easement doesn't take away too much from the agricultural land that is already there.
I just had another question. Do we know where they're going to be building the senior center slash trailhead, the physical building itself in relation to our easement and the Murray Park property?
It is a little further south, if you see on the map, where there's an area of trees right next to the the road into the park. So it would actually be on the other side of the the Diamonds and Things. I think Jolene's pulling up the map here. The lower right part of the park is my understanding.
And Mary, where on the map does the trail exist currently to meet up with that easement?
It's on the other side of of the highway. It crosses the highway and then would continue on the district's property.
So are you saying that the that they think they're going to build the trailhead and senior center to the south of the Diamonds?
Correct.
So that really has nothing, I mean, that's not that close to our easement, but I guess we don't need to be concerned about that? That's interesting.
Mary, did we have any concerns?
I don't, I know that requested a letter of endorsement from me, and I wanted to wait until the board meeting to just hear if any of the board members had concerns. And if I didn't hear concerns, then I would look to write that letter of endorsement. The timeline for that letter precedes the actual voting on the item, but I wanted to make sure we got through this board meeting before I did anything. I told Lori I would just wait until I heard at least from the board members through this possible upcoming action item.
Great, thank you.
Oh, so what, how are they going to access this building? Are they using Murray Park Drive to go past the baseball Diamonds to get over to where their building will be built?
I would assume that that's the plan, which would be the drive the buses use, which is a city drive, not a not a school district drive.
Hmm.
Are we concerned at all about an increase of traffic in that area?
I don't feel that way, just because it would be bikes and walkers and and such.
I forgot.
And certainly could cross right onto the park if that road were busy at the immediate dismissal time.
I meant to ask the mayor about this, but this trail and this connector, are these this trail, is that open to motorized traffic like snowmobiles? Do you know?
Gary, the Muscouteau is, but the trailhead turns before it gets to the city limits. Okay?
Okay, yep.
So if you know where I live, and then you head towards town, about halfway down the trail, it the the trailhead tees out, and then it goes west towards Green Lake, and then it goes east towards Douglas.
Got it. Okay, just curious.
Good question.
All right, are there other questions? Are there other questions that we can get out now so that we can vote expeditiously next month on this?
Hi, it's Betsy. It sounds like a wonderful project, but I would just want to get very specific in the language that we're agreeing to and and just try to be thinking, because a lot can change in 10 years, 20 years, and and make sure that we're anticipating and and not opening the door to something we don't intend to open to.
Thank you, Betsy.
I guess if you've ever been over there when there's baseball going on, on that road, it it's hardly a two-lane road without adding a whole nother functioning building where other more public people are going to to be going. So I would be interested in how they're going to put a parking lot over there, or how they might expand the the access, because the road itself already as it exists is really overcrowded.
And Nicole, I would assume that the parking lot that they're adding will help with some of that traffic, because they wouldn't have as maybe as much parking on that road. But whether we would pursue the trail or the easement, you know, how they use their road within the city, I think, is really up to the city.
Well, if they're looking for an endorsement from the district, then they're essentially seeking our, what, seal of approval for their project?
Chrissy may be, I know she lives near the trail, she may be able to speak and John as well to the traffic they see on the trail on a regular basis, and maybe when that traffic is heaviest.
Well, but I mean, they're also adding the senior center. It's all the same, it's going to be two separate operating businesses within the same facility. So I recognize that the trail might not be generating a large surge of public interest, but the idea is to have a senior center that does in fact do that. So having that influx of of the public in that area, in in an area that's already quite congested, is just going to be a a big challenge. I mean, you can hardly have two cars on that curve coming opposite directions as it stands today, so. I'm just interested in what what their plan is, I guess.
I know typically, school would not be in session when there were baseball games, so I think that helps in terms of our use. And most of our traffic is actually at the parking lot to the front of the school, mostly staff and buses are to that back parking lot.
I think it will be, I mean, I do think that the district will have some interest in how they propose the geometry of, you know, the parking lot for where they located, but I guess we'd have to, they're not, I mean, they're not ready to really tell us yet where that is. But that's kind of not directly related to the easement that they're looking for. Okay, I think that's a, those are valid concerns that, you know, need to be taken into consideration, especially when they're, when their plans become more concrete.
Gary, this is.
Go ahead.
No, sorry, Gary, this is John. If they're going to put crushed limestone down, I'm assuming then they're also going to maintain that limestone on a regular basis, because the county comes through and does the Muscouteau Trail every couple of years. And if you get a heavy rain, that limestone's going to wash out, and it'll create, you know, little rivers and pockets of stuff. So I'm assuming the city then is going to be responsible for maintaining that limestone grating and whatnot moving forward.
I read that in the.
Correct.
Did it say that in there? Okay.
It's item number four in the agreement, maintenance of the easement.
Okay.
For the sole responsibility of the city, as well as mowing and cleaning debris in the.
Perfect, thank you.
It's a good question.
Okay, excellent, excellent discussion. Next, we will, we can discuss the job, there's a series of job descriptions, I believe, and the first one is approving the special special education director job description. Are there questions for Mary on this? Okay. Next up would be the pupil services director job description. Would anybody care to, are there any questions or discussion points on this job description? Okay, hearing none. Now we have a somewhat revamped job description for assistant high school principal. Any discussions or comments on this?
This is Tom. What was added or taken away from the high school assistant principal job?
Good question, Tom. We didn't have one before, so this is making sure that we have a job description. When I came on board, we were missing quite a few, and so Jolene and I have been working just to to update those and and make sure that we have one for every position.
Okay, thank you.
And Bill did work on the on the job descriptions.
Okay. We are now past the job descriptions, and we have a chance to discuss the curriculum materials adoption recommendation for math at Catalyst. I don't know if anybody wants to ask any questions, or whether Chrissy would like to just give a summary of the memo.
I'm here. I don't know, like Gary said, if you want me to provide a summary or if you have questions about it.
I think in the past, you've discussed the the reasons that the faculty want to move away from Alex to the proposal, but if anybody has any other questions about it, now's a good time.
What I can tell you as board members is that this conversation has actually been, I guess, in the works for the past couple of years, since we switched Ripon Middle School to the adoption of CPM. This is a conversation that I have been having with the Catalyst teachers as well. And I guess one of the things that I will say, which has been really advantageous to this discussion, is the fact that with Ripon Middle School already having adopted CPM, it did give our Catalyst teachers an opportunity to see it in action and to really see how it works. As you know, Alex has been used from the very beginning, since Catalyst had started up back in 2012. And one of the things that our Catalyst teachers have noted is that because it is very self-paced and personalized, they have noticed over the years that the level of student engagement has really decreased. They've spent a substantial amount of time having to add additional support in terms of instruction to the students, because Alex itself is really meant to be a personalized platform to have the students work through. And I know that our Catalyst teachers have developed seminars and things to support the instruction, so that it does get into some of those deeper conversations. But they, as I said, you know, are are more than ready to transition into CPM. I think the platform of CPM and just knowing that CPM is really uses a lot of student discourse and collaboration, it really lends itself well to the project-based learning lens that Catalyst is already using. And I know that the teachers were also really excited about that.
Chrissy, real quick question, this is Amy. How will this affect our Catalyst students who, let's say, they're in sixth grade this year, and they will be completing seventh grade math through Alex? How will that affect those students?
Sure, that's a good question, Amy. Just like our sixth graders in Ripon Middle School, our sixth-grade Catalyst students who have gone through an accelerated track and have completed that that advanced curriculum will have an opportunity to do the Compacted course that's offered to seventh graders, which will then put them on track to be able to do Algebra I as an eighth grader as well. So we've thought that through as well. For students who are identified as GT in the area of math, too, we do have, just like an IEP for special education students, we have a differentiated education plan for gifted students as well. And certainly, you know, we can take a look at options for those students if it would warrant, you know, a certain, a certain case as well.
So are you saying that the, so let's say if they finish, if they're in sixth grade this year, and they finish seventh grade math as sixth graders, going into seventh grade, then they have the potential to take eighth grade math? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. Yes.
Ah. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, very few students, I will say. There is a very, very small handful of students that by seventh grade are actually ready to start Algebra I. But certainly in, you know, extreme instances, we have that and we certainly do work with our students. That includes Ripken Middle School students as well.
Yep, and I would just make, make sure the schedule fits to where they, they need so they can take that class.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Well, I really like, I really like the fact that you're taking note of a lessened, a lessened level of engagement with Alex and are being proactive about putting in a program that also, a different program that may better support project-based learning at Catalyst. And it makes, and I'm very happy that it's the same, that you're able to use the same program as the other school in the building. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next is, what did I do wrong here? Okay, next is curriculum materials adoption recommendation for high school math department. Perhaps a brief summary on this recommendation would be in order, Chrissy.
Sure, absolutely. And I do, I believe Janet Holba has joined the meeting as well. She was available to also answer any questions that you have. She was a vital part of the recommendation committee for this. I guess just a brief summary. As I noted within the, within the memo that I shared with the board, it has been a long time since we have adopted new materials at the high school. And with that being said, I know that the math department has spent well over a year just looking at different programs, different materials out there that would align better to our Common Core standards, to our priority standards that we have identified at the high school, as well as really aligning with the mathematical practices that we have been working so hard in terms of our instructional delivery models. And I do believe, you know, as I noted throughout the memo, just some of the things that we were really looking for in terms of materials to adopt. I will say that CPM was one of the programs that the high school had looked at as a possibility. And after, you know, reviewing it and looking at the reports and things, CPM is, it's an awesome program, but in a 47-minute class period at the high school, it's, it's somewhat difficult to deliver. I think that the materials that the high school math department have selected is a wonderful balance of, you know, being able to really have the students go into a deeper conceptualized way of learning while also providing that opportunity for that mathematical discourse and those conversations that need to happen. The tools, the, the materials that they provide are in digital format, as well as we would be looking at getting some hard copy materials as well. There's a lot of add-ons with this program, including decimals and some of those other pieces that the math department really loves. I know Janet can probably speak a little bit more to that. Janet, are you on and able to join?
Yep, I'm right here.
Perfect.
Um, did you want me to speak to some of the other materials?
Sure, that would be great.
So one of the, I mean, we spent a lot of time looking and really looked at everything because we know we'll probably have this for a while, so we wanted to make a good choice. But one of the things we really liked about this series is each unit starts with, it's called a three act. It's basically an exploratory activity geared right towards that unit to help really engage students and help them be curious and interested why they're learning what they're learning. Questioning is really important and as a teacher, when you're planning many classes, to try and do everything well can be difficult. And so we really liked the materials because they had the essential question for the lesson at the beginning. During the lesson, there's different questions to ask the students to help engage them. After the lesson, the students actually have a workbook that goes along with it where they have questions, do you understand? Do you know how? One thing we also really liked about the materials is when the students are practicing and doing their homework, they can get feedback right away if they're doing it right or wrong. They can ask for hints. If they go through hints and get the problem right, well, they might not know how to do it. So it will give them another one to practice that's similar to make sure they know it. And that's all data that can be given to us as teachers. It's correlated to the standards. So, I mean, I could talk a lot about it, but it, it just has a lot of things that are really, I think, going to be great for our students.
Thank you, Janet.
Thanks, Janet. Are there any questions the board has for either Janet or Chrissy?
Yeah, this is John here. I see these are six-year online access agreements. Are you guys, are you guys comfortable with six years? Because to me, it seems like that's a long time.
Knowing, John, what our cycle of looking at new materials is, it typically is that five to six-year process. So honestly, I would be comfortable with that and I believe Janet is too. The last time that we adopted materials, it was a long time. Janet, you can speak to that too. Your materials are well over 10 years old that you guys are currently using.
Yeah, I've, I've been with the district 12 years. So I was around last time we chose materials, which is right when the standards came out and we did the best we could. And it certainly hasn't been ideal the last few years, but I think as Chrissy wrote in there, you know, we're teachers, we supplement and we make things the best we can. So, I mean, it's not been ideal, but I would say the same thing about this. I mean, it's a monetary thing. We can only get new things every so many years, but we still, as teachers, can supplement if there's things that we find that are better to add to it and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for the, that summary of the memo. And we'll move on to the next possible action item, which is considering approval of, of the plan to replace the interactive whiteboards that are in use. This was an interest, this was interesting to me, I have to admit. And are there any questions for Travis? On this?
If I could jump in really quick, just to kind of give you guys a heads up on our status with the current interactive boards. Murray Park has some of our older boards and they're about eight to 10 years old. We've been having problems with projectors, bulbs, board controllers and the pen trays failing on them, as, as well as with the newer Windows 10 devices coming out and the newer graphics cards on them. We're definitely having problems with them syncing up and calibrating with the boards more often where teachers are having to constantly readjust the, the boards, resync them and touchpoints not always working. We've tried replacing controllers and the pens, but unfortunately, the new controllers and pens, they don't function well with the older boards or don't even function at all a lot of the times. We've actually gotten to the point where we've been swapping around some of the boards and projectors from classrooms that aren't using certain features, basically shifting around what we can to try to make things work, as well as purchasing new projectors in some of the rooms where projectors are dying. So it's, it's been kind of a long process to kind of keep them going this year. I'm working on getting, I have three quotes coming. One of them I'm still waiting on. And unfortunately, the one thing that they're, they're working on is removing the installation because Brian's crew is now able to help us with installation. I'm seeing savings of anywhere from 5,300 to 13,000 by removing the installation on those boards and having us do that ourselves. Also on top of that, the price of the interactive panels has gone down in the last two months for obvious reasons. So they are getting new quotes from the vendors to see what we can do. I did check to make sure that the turnaround on receiving these panels is reasonable. It sounds like it could be anywhere from three to five days, once you put in the order, that they can turn around and get those ready and shipped out. So there isn't a wait on getting those shipped out to us.
I know from what I've seen at the college, the era of the smart board is kind of, so I think this is a really great plan.
Gary, you are correct and I am. I don't want to see projectors anymore. I can't, can't stomach projectors anymore.
Yeah, yeah. But Trevor.
Yep.
Okay, are there any, any other questions on this item? Okay. My next possible upcoming action is to prove a possible 2% salary increase. Perhaps Mary or Jonah would like to summarize them all. There's not really much to summarize.
Yeah, if you want to start.
Yeah, uh, yeah, there's not too much to summarize. I didn't put in tons of tables or anything like that. It was just, we wanted to bring our recommendation of the 2%. CPI for negotiation purposes is 1.81. And I think 2% is in line with, with other school districts, you know, pretty well.
Well, I think Tom and Andy, you had met with us in the past when we met with teachers union. I don't know if you're interested in doing that again?
Yes, I can do that. This is Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I'm happy to do as well.
I don't know if there's anyone else who has an interest. We try not to make the group too big. Okay, we'll look to set, moving up with them between now and the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Next, we move to legislative updates and superintendent, the superintendent reports about legislative updates. Now I'll turn that over to Mary.
And there've been quite a few updates along the way. The most recent one that came out today was from Governor Evers and it is emergency order number 31 and it entails a Badger bounce back plan. I know that the School Board Association forwarded that out to board members. We can certainly make that available to anyone who's interested to, who isn't able to, to find it on the state of Wisconsin website, but wanted to just make sure that you know that we're following those updates as they come. And you'll notice recently, the one that we received was that schools in terms of the physical buildings would be required to stay closed through the end of the school year. And the school year is defined as June 30th. So we will be in our virtual mode as we complete our school year and close out based on our 2019-20 calendar and then would continue to have minimal individuals moving in and out of the building through June 30th. So just wanted to clarify that. I did have a parent ask, does this mean that schools are closed and the virtual learning stops? And just to clarify that the buildings are closed, but we are continuing with our K-12 schooling in our virtual mode. We will have some conversations with the admin team. We began them last week and we'll have some more this week now that the order's out, just in terms of what that means for the end of the school year. You know, Randy's in the process of connecting with parents at the high school regarding some of those critical student events that occur at the end of the year, especially those that impact seniors. I know Bill's worked with our sports teams to do a, a special caravan for our athletes and, and just want to make sure that, that you're aware of those things and the conversations that we're having, just in terms of, of impact on what we can report out on our report cards as we move to the end of the year. So as we finalize those conversations here in the next week or so, we'll communicate those out with the board as well.
Mary, this is Amy. Do you know going forward, does it look like we'll be able to offer summer school virtually? Or is that still in discussion mode?
Jonah, I'll let you jump in a little bit, just in terms of, of funding, because that is the one thing that we're really watching. We are able and have been able to offer virtual schooling for summer school, seven through 12. But we are looking at what that would mean for us if we were to do something virtually and whether or not we would be able to receive the same funding to run that and pay staff and have our buildings open.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I don't have too much to add because there's so much that's up in the air right now, but we've been told by the DPI that they don't have another mechanism to fund us. So in Ripken last year, I think we had 28 student FTEs. Basically, it was like we had 28 additional students because we ran our summer school. So they gave it, so that, that's how it was kind of taken, all the minutes that we had through summer school, K through 12, equaled about 28 actual students. And so not only because we would lose funding if we didn't run a summer school, but also because we know that there's going to be, you know, some major, I would assume that there'd be some major loss of skills and knowledge with this break. And just that, you know, we want to, we probably will want to run some sort of a summer school, whether it's virtual or a combination of virtual and in-person at the end of the summer, something like that.
Thank you, Jonah. Sorry, Mary, one last question. With our school year considering to be finalized by June 30th, does that mean that as a district we'll continue to do free breakfast, free lunch just till June 30th? Or does that open up the opportunity for us to do it all the way through August?
And actually, we, we will actually close out our school year based on our 2019-20 calendar. The end of the school year being June 30th is, is also partly that fiscal end of year and that was the request to have our buildings, our buildings closed. But Jonah, I don't know if you can speak to the summer food feeding program and if that would kick in at some point?
Yeah, the, the, the summer food service program, just like last year, it can go through all of August until our school year begins again. The one thing that we might want to talk about with Avian's and nothing's set in stone is that earlier before this hap, before the coronavirus happened, we had talked about perhaps ending one week early so that we wouldn't go in the last week of August. But, you know, if everybody feels pretty strongly that we need to run the whole summer, we could, you know, we could run right through the end of August. That, that, that was the one request that they had, but that was like two or three months ago that they had asked for that. So I don't know if they feel the same way anymore either, so.
Thank you.
And Jonah, we would just have to consider what that summer feeding program looked like. I would assume we'd be granted the opportunity to do our pickup and deliveries if we're not allowed to have students do, do face-to-face meals as they did last year.
Yeah, yeah. The, we're currently considered operating under the summer food service program right now. So, so what we're doing right now, I think will take us through the end of the summer. Although I do think there is something that has to be approved again because I know for our delivery that that's approved through June, but I think they're just going to extend it. I think they'll extend the, you know, the way that they've relaxed the rules.
So good question. Just for continuity of discussion, I'd just like to go to agenda item 11.3, which is just with regards to planning based on the COVID. which is just with regards to planning based on the COVID-19. And as I said, our principals will be meeting or will be meeting as an admin team to just discuss what some of those end-of-year things look like and any proposals that we would need to bring to the board in terms of how we close out the school year and try to make kids whole as we finish finish out the year and families, for that matter. One of the things that that was interrupted in terms of planning with COVID and the close of school, we did cancel our engagement session, which would have been our fourth engagement session for our referendum. And I just wanted to connect with the board to find out your interest in either rescheduling that engagement session or potentially having a work session to just talk about next steps with with the referendum. One of the things that we were talking about when we were meeting was to design a survey to send out to the community. And part of it was to look at potential items that could be on there. Some of the items that came up were things like the boiler replacements dating our PE equipment, planning ahead for the next field turf replacement because that endowment is is gone, and then looking at continuing to support some of the items that are on the current referendum. And I don't know where the board is at in terms of of consideration for, you know, moving forward with that operational referendum planning or potentially looking for an increase in that in that referendum. So I was looking to you for guidance. I didn't know if you already had some strong feelings about what you would like to see and do moving forward, if you would like to have a board work session to engage in some conversation amongst yourselves, and then whether or not you'd want to have an engagement session. And again, the purpose of the fourth engagement session was to really look at that survey design and what would be sent out to communities in terms of their tolerance for, you know, even a potential increase in in the amount that was asked through through the referendum. I know it's kind of a big question to throw out. I didn't know what your thoughts were. We do have a May work session set up. We had we had planned to do our, you know, some board reorganization, but that certainly could be something that that we add to the agenda that night as well.
I would find value in our board having a work session that is specifically designed around conversations on the referendum.
I think I would too. I'm wondering whether the board has an opinion on what people on the board think about whether or not we've collected enough information from the community so that we don't have to engage in a survey production. That survey would, of course, cost money. And I'm just wondering whether it's not like a, it's not a bad way to spend some funds. But if we, considering the uncertainties that await us as we move forward, would we really get a lot of value from asking survey questions when everybody is really unsure about what what the next six months to a year or more kind of look like economically?
You know, the the information that we have collected from the community during the previous sessions, that was all presented to us in a very different environment than the one that we're in right now. You know, since we've collected that information, we've had large numbers of people in the community experience job loss. We're we're just looking at things very differently now than we did just six or seven weeks ago. We need to have some conversation around this, given our current circumstances and moving forward. And Mary, you had posed a question as you were introducing this about how we how we felt about going forward and and asking us the question, what we thought about an increase in the in the referendum. And, you know, that may have been on the table before. But but given what everyone is going through right now, I'm certainly not comfortable asking our families for an increase.
I would echo those same sentiments, Betsy. And even even before we we began to experience stay-at-home orders and some of the consequences that have come from this pandemic, I think that there there were certainly individuals who perhaps had a little bit of apprehension around the idea of doing a referendum. So just just the thought of, on the one hand, having a referendum, and this has been something we've been discussing for a while, what's the general idea of what that sum would look like? And to then, with everything going on and with the timeframe we're looking at right now up to November, to then increase, I do not believe is a wise idea.
Jonah, this is Amy. I have a question for you in regards to numbers. If if I look back at some of my notes, I'm a little bit unclear. If we were looking at a home with property value around the $200,000 mark, was it accurate to say that an increase would it would cost the taxpayer approximately $270 extra on their property taxes? Do I have, are my notes right in that one or am I am I off?
Amy, I don't think the board ever talked about what an actual increase would do. I think what we had talked about was that if we went with the current referendum, there wouldn't be an increase because it's already in built into the tax bill at this time. Jonah, I don't know if you remember something different.
No, I, that's what I would say too. I think we said that the that the cost for the referendum currently for a $100,000 house or a property was, I think, $68. I'd have to go back and look, but I think it was $68 per taxpayer that had $100,000 property value.
Okay, thank you. Well, the reason I'm asking is unfortunately, I don't get to be a part of your future discussions on whether or not we're going to ask for the increase. And just throwing it out there as a thought that if that that is the numbers and we would ask for an increase from our community at a $200,000 property value, we'd be looking at an increase on property taxes of less than $200 for a homeowner. And right now, I look at our educational system, and there's a lot of unknowns. There's a lot of unknowns with technology. We don't know how something like this could affect us again. And I just want to say just absolute applause to the Ripon Area School District for having their technology in place and being able to provide such an incredible education to all of our students. With some of our districts up north or in other states, the schools have shut down, and our students' learning has not. And I think looking at the potential of, let's say it's a $200, a $200 increase in our property taxes, I think that's a value on our children's education that's worth seeking if we could provide enough community support behind it in order to continue to make sure that our students have the proper technology that we need in case something like this again would affect our district. So just a thought on how to market and to collect information, you guys.
Amy, I think going off of what what you just said and what other board members have stated this evening is the the increase I could see being a challenge at this time, given the economic climate. But at the same time, we have the $500,000 built in. It's basically a renewal of something that we've already been spending and already been using. But I do think that the survey might be valuable because of the current climate. More families are actively engaged in their child's learning. And so their priorities for where that money maybe would have been spent before they had to be so hands-on with the home virtual learning might have shifted. So I do think that the survey might be valuable to get another sense of of where our parents are are moving toward putting their dollars, like what value do they find? Do we need to have improved Chromebooks or a different type of approach to technology where the the referendum dollars should be allocated towards as we move into this different, I guess, economic state? And Gary, I did read in the email that the the fee that we're going to be paying for our consultant services will remain the same whether we do the survey or not. Is that is that correct, Mary?
That that is correct, and that's because we were granted such a significant decrease in the in the fee to begin with, which is one of the reasons we went with that with that vendor. We're only paying about a third of what they would typically cost, so there really isn't a lot to to credit back. And they have been on site with us and engaging and and leading meetings and and traveling and and producing materials for us, so.
Sure. So I guess I would.
I wanted to put that in there because I wanted to make sure that wasn't one of the deciding factors to to pursue the survey or not.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought there was, okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that back up.
Yeah, so I guess I I would find value in the survey, given the shift of values from prior homeschool virtual learning, pre-corona, to to what we're moving into for the future. I feel like maybe our family's values have shifted a little bit as well, and they'd like their dollars maybe put in in different areas of their child's education.
So am I hearing potential board work session or just trying to reschedule that engagement session and and do that virtually? Do you have a preference? Is it one and the same?
Well, I kind of think that maybe there there's enough sentiment to do a work session to focus so that we're all on the same page with how we're going to move forward, you know, with the referendum.
Okay.
Maybe I'm, is that, does that seem okay to other members?
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, we're we're in a completely different world now, and we need we need to talk about this and and get on this, you know, get back on the same page again with where we're at, because where we're at today is so completely different than our last conversation around this.
Mary, this is Jolene. On the board calendar, we do currently have May 6th set up as a board work session. So just wanted to throw that out there to all of you. I'm not sure if that's a good timeline or not for what you want to do.
Do other people agree that it might be a good idea to, well, does anybody object to doing a a work session on May 6th to?
Gary, I was wrong. I'm sorry. I went off of memory, which is not a good thing. I had to look at my calendar. It's May 4th. The 6th is a Wednesday night, so it would be May 4th. Sorry.
Two weeks from tonight.
Correct. Mary, is that soon enough?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I mean, I think it's a pretty good idea that we meet and discuss. Well, I I just, I don't think there's anything left to say. I think it's a good idea unless we I hear objections. We should go ahead with that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Let's go back to 11.2. And this is an open enrollment update.
Yep, and this is the time of year where we just share with you what we're seeing in terms of the open enrollment window. We did want to just clarify that that window has been extended based on the most recent orders from the governor, so that we would have additional time. It will be towards the end of May now instead of of April. So that will push things back a little bit in terms of when we can bring to the board those final numbers and approvals.
Jonah, thanks very much for putting together these charts. It's very helpful. Are there any questions or clarifications that members have about our open enrollment situation?
Can I just make one clarification? We have two charts on the attachment for 11.2. The first one shows new applications that are higher. It's like 66 or something. And the second PDF shows applications of 58. The reason for that is that the second attachment shows only new applications for students that want to go to Ripon as a first choice or as their only choice. And the first attachment shows, I think, the total number of applications for open enrollment. So the numbers are slightly different, but it's the same. It's the same information. It's just it's presented slightly differently, so to clarify.
And when we do our projections, we really are very conservative and use the second set of numbers, although we are aware that there may be students within that first set of numbers that choose to attend Ripon.
And we have a healthy surplus of incoming over outgoing, I would say. Okay, any other comments or questions on open enrollment?
Sorry, the only thing I was going to add was just that we'll we'll have do open enrollments in, maybe out as well through the summer. So by the time we do our second Friday count in September, I would expect it to grow quite a bit, so. Another thought.
And we would look to approve these applications at the June 15th board meeting, most likely.
Very good. Okay, next. We're at school operations reports. Are there any questions or comments to our building principals?
Gary, and I did ask the principals to be prepared to share with the board, just to give you kind of an a window inside what's happening with virtual learning. So I would look to give them each just a moment to talk about what's happening at their level with our transformed school district.
I would, I would welcome that.
It is most interesting to see what's going on. It is. It is just absolutely amazing. And we've also are working to put a video together because we think it's really important for our community members to also be able to see what's going on. What does it look like for our youngest learners, all the way through our high school learners? And what, you know, what is what does that mean then for for parents and students and teachers alike?
Okay, well, we all have the items that were provided, but if I guess we could start at at Barlow Park Journey, if Tanya would like to mention something in that regard.
You, you all can make a look through the slides on your own. There are some video links and things like that, so you can see it a little bit more close up just because it's really interesting to see even kindergartners participating in a virtual morning meeting. So the the initial starting point, though, for all of our classrooms is Google Classroom. And so every classroom has Google Classroom started up. And then that includes, that includes regular education, special education, and then any of our specialists as well. The day starts with a usually with a morning meeting. Sometimes that's with a whole group. Sometimes it's with smaller groups or one-on-one. They get an email with daily tasks on it, kind of a checklist to go through. And sometimes that's just organized on Google Classroom. Sometimes it's in a set of slides for the kids to check off. And then they have opportunities to respond through Flipgrid and through, you know, different apps on Google. And they participate in some recorded lessons or even some live lessons. So it's definitely been a huge learning curve, but wow, our staff has been really incredible in what they are willing to try and put out there for the best interest of our kids, because we sure miss them. We do have opportunities for one-on-one and small group instruction. Um, we do have opportunities for one-on-one um and small group instruction, as well as office hours for uh kids to pop in when they have questions. Um, and we're making sure that we're taking care of each other and um uh doing check-ins every Monday morning. Um, offering um professional development sessions at late start still, um where the staff are leading different um professional developments with relation to technology. And then we record them and put them in our own Google Classroom. Um, we've put a document out there where staff can sign up to read one-on-one um with particular students or small groups just so they get some extra interaction with adults. And we also have um videos of our classified staff there um reaching out to our students. So Mrs. Kay does some cooking and um Mrs. Burnt or Mrs. Keshavaski does some um uh art crafty related things for our kids. So those are posted. It just does extras for them. Um, our specialists have done a variety of videos um involving everything from making their own musical instruments with Mrs. Tutant to making our own PE equipment in our living room to practice some of the skills that uh Mr. Nails is having our kids engage in. And then um we are also making sure that we're taking the time to get feedback um and put communications out as often as possible to family, which is included um surveys where we had um 210 responses, which is amazing for us. Um, and then also um some videos and then even some paper documents mailed in in the mail, so that we're trying a variety of ways to get in touch with our families. So that's virtual learning at the early level.
It's amazing. Tanya, I'm wondering about the, you must have served surveyed the parents. I mean, it's quite a commitment for that age group, for for the parents, I would imagine. What are you hearing from them?
Um, it it is, well, and I can speak personally to that as well. It is um definitely not easy, all um having several uh Google meets throughout the day scheduled in our home. And I know that um other parents struggle with with that structure um too, just making sure everybody's getting to everything on time. Um, what we were really looking for is the amount of time that our kids were spent engaging in the work, because that looks a little bit different than brick and mortar school. And so we wanted to make sure that we were giving enough, but not too much. And then um we also asked our parents just how they wanted to um see grading and report cards um turn out at the end of the year. So we had some feedback for that discussion um to put in our long-term plan. And then our most important question, we just asked how they were doing, and we were able to connect some families with um some resources um that they didn't have access to, just to help them out a little bit.
Very nice. Uh, other questions for Tanya? Thank you. And let's move to the Murray Park, Murray Park Quest building.
Okay, thank you. Um. Sounds good. I'm just waiting for present mode here. Um, and I I added some things into our um highlights, just because there's some things that are fairly confidential, and so I wanted to make sure that I wasn't sharing in length of of those items. Uh, but the first thing that I wanted to share with you is just our um digital learning um slideshow lesson plan kind of thing. This is our central hub as a school, where we have um not only the office hours of our staff, but um so that people know, you know, when, what their hours are in terms of, when to reach them over if they're so that they protect like their noon hours and that kind of thing, and just get a little bit of a break too. But their their lesson plans um which you can see off to the side over here for each of the grade levels, um along with the attendance and the accountability checks for each of the classrooms too. And it was a nice opportunity for teachers to be able to each see what each other had and to be able to share those resources with one another. Um, everything from FIED to our SEL work, um to our reading, writing, math, and other resources as well. So it's one central hub that we all use at the school. But if you were to go in, for example, to a third grade lesson plan, um I'm just going to, or even a fourth grade, I'm gonna pull the fourth grade one open first. Um, this is um a very typical looking kind of slide deck format um that teachers are using to get kids engaged, um to welcome them to their morning meetings in the morning. Um, being able to um check back in later um with those morning meetings too. Um, if they, for for a recorded session, if they couldn't get there. But most kids do show up to morning meetings. It also gives you like the office hours. Teachers are running small groups and things between those and working with individual kids too. Uh, but we're, we're really trying to divide and conquer um with this staff that we have, the certified as well as classified staff. Um, and most days, um classrooms are really, and on all days, classrooms have a kind of a must-do list. So it really lays out what do they have to do that day, and we're trying to keep that as clean as possible. And then giving more of that long-range list. And then that gives, uh they also try to provide that to parents. Um, so giving that snapshot to them in advance, so that they have an idea of what's coming for their child. And then here too, um you'll see that there are, you know, there are links of things that they need to do for practice. Um, for example, you know, a cause and effect practice document that they then submit. Um, and and again, teachers are teaming up. So this is a fourth grade Murray Park classroom of uh Mrs. McClure and Mr. Brooks. Um, you you get into, you know, the full day of, you know, watching videos, so there are clicks for, you know, there there are live video sessions. There's some live sessions they have overall together, again, small group and and large group, like Tanya said, as well as some one-on-one things. Um, and and, you know, spelling, and they're still trying to differentiate. Also, opportunities, obviously, for kids to listen to their read alouds and so on. Um, they try to divide things up. I know this looks goofy to have a black slide in between, but it actually is, it's a barrier so that they can get in between and see what are the things from my classroom, and then how to separate that out for like our specialists. So, you know, here we have our our FIED music um and art, as well as our SEL stuff. Um, but those people too, and I'll get into that in a little bit, are are part of partnerships and supporting our teachers with our math, reading, and writing. So we're really, we've worked a lot with that. Um, there's some opportunities just for fun. And then we get into um after the next um last section, those other specialist areas, those other supports teachers, so like our um our Title I staff and um our EL staff and our special ed staff of where kids are supposed to be and links and how to get there. So again, this, these slide decks give us a ton of information. Um, then as you kind of move forward, um, this is like our special ed. And again, they have a hub too for all of their staff because we've got to maximize every single stu- every single person in our building to make sure that our kids' needs are being met. So these are everything from, you know, their office hours of when they're connecting, and then every teacher contact they have. So every support staff member, every certified staff member has a contact log. So every child they meet with, they are keeping track of that. And then the classroom, the the um special ed teacher then can go into that and see what kind of progress was made um or not, and where they, where they begin their instruction for the next day. Um, this is the partnership thing that I was talking about. This has been huge for our school. So we established this because we knew that, for example, our art, music, and FIED teacher, um even our um like our tech person and our front office assistant and so on. Um, a- as well as some people from the college who are are part of our Brave program. We need, we needed all hands on deck, and we knew that like FIED is looking a little different right now, and art's looking a little different right now, and so on and so forth. So we have established partnerships between them and classrooms and kids with 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 needs. So we're, we're, we're setting them up so that they have the supports in place, and they have very specific um connections between them. Instead of it just being, hey, reach out to somebody who who maybe has a little flexibility in their day. We we assigned the partnerships to make sure that the 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 supports are in place without without it having to to be an ongoing concern. And we continue to work through that. So, you know, like even today, I had multiple meetings with teachers as we kind of keep evaluating the data of now what's next and where do you need help. So then I reached out to Wanda through Brave, and she's reaching out to the college to get more help and so on and so forth. So we're, we keep, we keep refining this um each week. We have a ton of meetings, and so I just wanted to capture a couple of them. Um, the late start, obviously, and this was, you know, the first one is um, we're, we're tapping into Odyssey too. They're, they're much more experts in this than we are, even though our staff is doing an incredible job. They've been through the trenches of this for longer than we have, so just learning from them. And again, everything from long-range planning to problem-solving things, um whether that be a student or a a thing that we're working through in in terms of like accountability systems, grade-level team meetings. I had to put this one in. Sorry, Chrissy, Mary, um I don't think Linda's on, but we we do try to have some fun too in our meetings with um here's a district-wide one. We were working on grading practices. We've been doing plenty of interviews online. Um, our special ed team meets tons and and as well as their the IP meetings, so we're, we're involved with those. And we continue to keep track, you know, and keep in touch with our our custodians and and maintenance department too. So lots of ongoing supports there um to be able to work together, even when we're not right in front of each other. And um then the the last thing that I would just mention before we we get going is that, like, the late start this week, just to give you a sneak peek of what we're doing. Um, we are looking at what are the areas of need that staff have, where we start together and we end together. But there are some specific areas that teachers want to explore a little bit more. Um, so this week, again, they have a chance to be able to tap into, whether it's the IXL program that we have um for reading and math, where kids are doing some work there, and we have a representative coming in there, or doing some of their own individual meetings, um whether it be um promoting student engagement or what it might be. The very last thing is that each each week we start, every couple of weeks, we start um some celebrations because our team are is working really hard across the district. And so places where we can find celebrations, I put them in, they put them in. Uh, but it's a great way to just, to keep people just moving and sharing great ideas along the way too. So that's just a small, I guess, snapshot of what we are doing um at Murray Park Quest. Um, the days are full, the days are busy, but they're also very rewarding when we see the progress that's being made. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Renee. Very dynamic.
Thank you very much to you too for your support.
Okay, and um next.
All right.
Catalyst, yep.
So I shared you the first part of it. You guys all have that. That's, again, a lot of these same things, uh Tanya and Renee already spoke about. We do a lot of the same things. We have team meetings, as you see up top. Um, do that multiple times a week. Um, one thing I do want to stress that we haven't talked a whole lot about is we do have the Brave Hot Hotline Help. Um, so they do that. That is open, as you see right there, from 3 till 9. Uh, so that is continuing on. This is what it looks like if you're a teacher in the middle school. You get to see all the kids on the screen through the Google Meets. Uh, many times those obviously are live, and sometimes uh we end up having recordings, but as you scroll down, I can also show you that there are smaller group meetings. Sometimes they meet in groups of three. Uh, CPM math, they meet in groups of four, sometimes eight, just to get more of a connection. Um, I'm gonna show you this a little more in detail. Uh, these are just some uh examples of what a student would see from their teachers or their grade-level team, uh teams or or grade level as far as the calendars go. So I'll scroll down to that. The, the first thing I just want to show you real quick is this would be something that would be a recording. So obviously, I'm not gonna play that, but so if there was something, and we use Google Classroom a lot um where our students, that is basically the major hub for homework, uh that would be handed in, that type of thing. But this was just a recorded lesson that a student could go back to if they needed extra help. And replay that from Mrs. Riley. So that was a kind of a, that that happens in a lot of our classes. Um, this is sixth grade catalyst. As Renee showed this before, this is their slide deck. So a lot of our teachers have kind of the same thing. So as this is kind of loading, um on the side over here, it'll go over what is needed for the week. Um, like, I'm gonna jump to slide seven. As you can see right there, I could come over here and click on the names, and then it talks about reading, math, science, social studies, and it gives them all the directions of what they need to do. Um, if there's videos, uh you name it. So there's just a lot of, again, same types of principles and things that are going on um at the middle school as there is at the other schools as well. Uh, let's see. Moving on to seventh grade. Uh, this is an example of their calendar. And so they have, again, links that are right on there. If they need to do a live meet, you can just click onto this link to meet. And so we tried to condense it so that they don't have to go to so many different places. Uh, we tried to put all their classes in one area and make it as simple as possible for them and also the parents to see so that it's user-friendly. Um, so I think uh it's been working out pretty decent. I would say we're probably at anywhere between 88 and 90 percent uh attendance and engagement at the middle school. Um, so we do make calls and things like that to get kids back on track, just like the other schools I I'm sure are doing as well. Um, an example at the eighth grade level, this is their calendar. So these are really the things that we focus on a lot, trying to get kids to follow the calendars and then work through Google Classroom, and 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 we obviously have the meets throughout. So they kind of have the same process uh as they did in seventh grade. Teachers are on the left-hand side, and the links and meets and all that are in the calendar itself, so they don't have to really go too far. Uh, let's see. Our specials too are involved, and we decided to put all their stuff in one general area. Uh, they're also linked to the calendars of each grade level. Um, but this gives them an opportunity to take a look at what they need to uh post for their area, and then our kids work at uh on those activities throughout the week. So they post that usually on Mondays, and then usually those things are due on Fridays. Again, have links to meet and uh always trying to meet up with the kids somewhere. And then one of the last things that we were using too, because it's difficult sometimes to get the information is just another video that we added. And this is something that we shared with all our kids, where you can take a photo or a video of something that you would need to maybe hand in for work. Uh, so a lot of times in math, uh if they're struggling getting things over to uh one of the math teachers, they can take a video of the completed work uh or a photo. And then one of the things that our office ladies have been doing is, and we have a, every day, we have a newsletter that goes out to all the students every day, just like our daily announcements. So we add things on there and have them check on things and give them some information that, and kind of keep it light. Obviously, you can see that there are some things on there that are just kind of making things light and and getting them an opportunity to see something if we need just to make a general announcement. So that is what, how kind of the middle school looks, and like I said, we're doing a lot of the same things as everybody else is doing as well. Does anybody have any questions at all on that?
Thank you, Rick.
You bet.
Now we'll move to the high school. Randy, are you um, are you with us?
I had to. Yep, I'm here.
Very good.
Okay, can you see this here? Um am I presenting right now or not?
Yes.
So, early on, um, we sat down and we devised the schedule for our students. So basically, we're doing everything that Kade is doing, just probably at the high school level. Um, one of the things that I did right away, it's uh become a blessing and a curse at the same time, is do a daily bulletin to students and parents, and do a different daily bulletin to staff. Um, just to kind of keep everybody on the same page. One of the things that, uh, I can just go to this page here. You know, if you look up here, this is our class schedule, and it just tells, you know, we run the even-numbered classes on Monday and Wednesday, odd-numbered classes on Tuesday and Thursday. We've done this from the very beginning. It is, uh, really, it's our class. Teachers then can meet with kids afterwards. Teachers can um talk with kids that need extra help. Uh, they can talk with kids just to see, you know, the check-in every day. Basically, we're still at probably 90-plus percent um attendance, which is phenomenal for high school students. And obviously, we have credits and those kind of things that all students need to attain for graduation, so it's a little bit trickier sometimes. But our students have been very good. Our teachers have been excellent. But our students have been very good, our teachers have been excellent as far as how they're accommodating students. This is just some other information that has been sent out and we keep it up here for the student to, and the parents I should say, students and parents to look at, just to make sure that it's always in their, in their view site. One thing that I do want to show you that we, I guess this one, we talk about maybe what does a, this isn't it, what assessment might look like at the high school now that we can't do some of the things. So if you see, there's just different things that are happening. Our teachers are really adapting to different assessments that the kids might be taking. Obviously, they can't come to school and do a paper and pencil test. Mr. Jonas here, and these are just some examples. Mr. Jonas has created a website for his AP class. I was walking coach downtown one day and a student, I was talking with a student and they were really pleased with how US history, Mr. Calm has set up US history with some different things that he's doing. What you're seeing there is Tom, not Tanya, Natasha. Instead of taking a paper pencil test and how to conduct a pet physical, she had them turn in the video and that, and I thought that was pretty cool and I thought it was pretty cool. If you don't have a pet, you can use a stuffed animal. A video, this is a video of how they did a math problem. They got to choose the problem that they did and this was for an assessment. And then they explained how they did it and then they sent it to the teacher. This is just an act of kindness that Mrs. Forks class did with some, reached out to some nursing homes, adults and really made their Easter very pleasant and gave, put a smile on their face. This was a Algebra I class where Mrs. Dobbins put together a couple of clips of, it's called goal formative, it's something new that the math department's using and it's a way for teachers to give feedback right away to students when they're doing some work. Other than that, there's a lot of other things that are happening that are pretty cool. The staff is really working hard to, this is the staff bulletin that I do too. It's similar to the student bulletin in some ways, some ways not. And so I have to do two separate ones because on the staff bulletin, there's some, you know, student specific information that we share. So again, everyone's on the same page. But really a lot of things that everybody else is doing is just at the high school
Well, very good. And I like your daily updates. Very good. Now we're going to hear about special ed in the online learning era with Becky Moore.
Uh huh. One second. Okay, as we talked about, all kinds of students learning in their digital form now, we just wanted to show a little bit of how our special education students are also learning in a virtual format, which could be difficult for them, but I think a lot of them are having fun. And I just wanted to show a little bit about what it looks like from their end. So in this particular example, they get to see their teacher talk to them about a bug search they get to do at home. And I think just to see their teacher's face sometimes is awesome. These are our littlest learners who don't necessarily have their own devices from school, but have access through something that mom or dad might have and they get to meet and go on exploring adventures with their teachers and they get to visit their Google Classroom where their teachers have a multitude of things for them to do over the course of a whole week. And sometimes it's books and songs and cooking lessons and arts and crafts and, and other times it's stories and other lessons. And meeting with their specialists is very important. Our OT and PT and speech and language teachers have been posting all kinds of things into our Google Classrooms for parents to help our students learn in that way as well. There's lots of live instruction that goes on for our special education students that's real easy to find in a Google Classrooms. Their teachers are keeping their regular video class meeting links available, sending kids reminders of when their classes are coming up. Mr. Nails is posting videos for his class in adaptive Fayed as well as Mr. Bradley hosting live classes with some of his special education students to keep those physical education skills up, encourage them to be working and doing things, even though we're not at school, we can still go bowling in our basements or we can be doing fun yoga videos at home. This is a fun example to show of of somebody that had a birthday in their class and they decided to wish that student a happy birthday and then they went ahead and had other students post a flipgrid video And so Johnny could go through and listen to all of their friends, wish them happy birthday and feel like they can be a part of their school community even when we're not at school. Mrs. Bungie went ahead and showed a big part of what special education is doing at Murray Park, but it's very neat how students only have to go to their general education teachers' slide decks and find everything they need because at the end of every slide deck or within every slide deck are exactly where whoever you are needs to be meeting with what teachers at what times. And by clicking right on the little link, it takes you right to your meet. So it's very easy to find lots of things. Teachers are doing online check-ins like this. We can't take paper and pencil tests, but easy ways to give feedback. And then lots of individual lessons going on where teachers are posting to Google Classrooms or write to students emails, a special individualized writing or math or reading lesson. That's, that's the way they may do it in school and it's still showing up in that way when we're not in our regular school building. So lots of support going on from our specialists and our special education teachers for all of our students. We also have a Google Classroom for our special education teachers just to catch any DPI information that's coming out and kind of a hub for all of our support staff to meet and catch tips on how to present things to kids or tech tools that they might need that they weren't used to using before. So we found a pretty, pretty fun way to engage in virtual learning. Any questions for special ed? Thank you.
Okay, I am having technical difficulties. Cause I think I've lost the meeting.
I know Gary, next up is curriculum department highlights. I don't know if there's anything Chrissy wants to share.
Yes, curriculum department highlights.
All right. I don't know if anyone has any questions at all for me. I will just reiterate, you know, my role in all of this. I've been kind of behind the scenes and just part of rolling a lot of this stuff out. I guess I'd just like to reiterate just how incredibly proud I am of our teachers, our administrative team leaders and just the work that they have done over the course of these past five weeks. What we have accomplished in just a matter of days to get this up and running is something that districts still are not experiencing. I know as part of my consortium and, you know, talking with other directors across the state, they are not having the same success that we are. And I am just so incredibly proud of everybody working so hard to make this all happen. As I noted in my highlights, I know now that we know that, you know, virtual learning will take place from home until the end of the school year, I have been working with both our administrative team as well as teacher leaders, just to really develop those long range plans and what that will look like for the end of the year in terms of grading and instruction and so many other pieces. You know, I've noted obviously the math recommendations that are coming before the board and then just the continued assessment update as well. Just informing you that obviously our state assessments have been suspended for the remainder of this school year, which will certainly impact our accountability reports if we even have those. I know those are being discussed also at the state level in terms of what that may look like for next year as well. So again, just as I see everything that, that the principals shared, it just, it is unbelievably, it's, it's just amazing to see everything that everybody is doing to make this successful and just the feedback and the comments that we are getting from the community and even from other districts as they look to us as role models in rolling things out. It is just, it's just a very, very proud feeling to be part of this district.
And I know I've shared that with the board as well, but so many of our staff are just going above and beyond and putting in, including our leadership team, incredible number of hours on a daily basis to make sure that things are ready to be rolled out to students and that it's quality materials, that it's live and engaging, which is why we see such a high level of attendance. And again, if those students aren't attending or if there's issues, our tech team is stepping in, our counselors are stepping in, our principals are, support staff are being assigned to kids and families to make sure everyone is feeling supported. So it is definitely a team, a team effort. And again, I just, I echo what Chrissy said and you could see it in the quality of materials that, that our leader shared with you, including the work that we're doing with our special education students.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you Chrissy. Yeah, it's really overwhelming to see the, what, what's being done in our district. Okay, it's now time for food service reports. Anything Jonah that you'd like to mention?
Not, not really. The Avian's invoices are quite behind, but they, they're extremely busy right now and they're doing a great job serving us and we'll get our invoices eventually. So, and we, we have some of them now, but they just didn't hit by the end of February. So.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have our interim budget report. Any questions for Jonah on the interim budget report? Okay. Hearing none. That takes us to mentioning April 27th, which will be the annual board reorganization meeting at 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll choose officers for the Board of Education and I guess we will welcome David Scott back to the board.
Congratulations to our returning board members as well.
Yes.
Amy will miss you.
And yes, I wanted to mention Amy has done a fantastic job as a board member and we will certainly miss, miss you Amy.
Thank you. I'll miss you.
Maybe you can do some consulting work with us.
Hey, after tonight's board meeting, I am absolutely convinced that you are surrounded by a team of excellence. Very proud of our district, I am.
Thank you Amy. We will miss you.
Yes, okay. And following that, the next event for board members will, well, we'll have our work session coming up in two weeks. On May 18th, we'll have a regular, our regular monthly board meeting. And I think that's the end of tonight's meeting. If I'm not mistaken, we don't have a closed session scheduled tonight. That's correct, right Jolene? And Mary?
Yep, correct.
Very good. Okay, so.
You just need a motion to adjourn Gary?
I think that's it. I think I need a motion to adjourn. I just want to add one, just my immense appreciation for all of the work that has been, being done in our district from the top cabinet levels to all the employees of our district. We're really working hard and we're keeping learning going in the Ripon area school district in a way that a lot of people did not sign up for, but a lot of people are embracing. And it's just a tribute to the organization and, and leadership of our administrators and dedication of our building principals, hard work from our teachers, aid, interior workers, building maintenance and all the other people that I should have mentioned and didn't. It, I'm very impressed and I cannot thank you enough. And after having said that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the April meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Okay. That was Nicole seconding, right?
Yeah.
Looks like we're almost adjourned, but not quite. Just need Tom and Nate. Thank you Nate. And thank you Tom. Thank you very much folks for a, our successful, fantastic virtual monthly meeting. I guess that's it.
Amy, for your turn to our community. Hi, everybody.
Bye Amy.